East Hampton Town Board, we are live.
Thank you, LTV. Good morning and welcome everyone to the East Hampton Town Board work session of Tuesday, June 17, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Councilmember Flight.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Calder.
Present.
Supervisor.
Present. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we start, I'd like to share a few remarks about Sunday's tragic accident, and please bear with me because this is hard. There are moments when words fail. This is one of them. Our community is heartbroken. We are mourning the loss of Scarlett Urgiles, a 19-year-old young woman whose life ended far too soon. We are praying for those who were injured, and we are standing with their families as they face the unimaginable. To Scarlett's loved ones, please know that you are not alone. We grieve with you. We ache with you. And while nothing can ease this pain, we hope you feel the strength and love of the community around you. We will walk with you through this together. To the families of those who were injured, please know this community is thinking of you. We are holding you in our hearts and hoping for healing and strength. Your children matter to all of us, and so do you. I wish to thank Superintendent Adam Fine, Principal Sarah Smith, the teachers and staff at East Hampton High School, and the counselors who responded quickly and compassionately to support our students during this incredibly difficult time. To the Springs Fire Department and to the Springs Amagansett and East Hampton Village ambulance crews, thank you. Your efforts made a difference, and your care means so much to this community. And to the officers of the East Hampton Town Police Department, thank you. We are grateful for the professionalism and compassion you bring to your work every single day, especially in moments like this. To our young people, I want you to hear this clearly. You do not have to carry this alone. If you are hurting, please talk to someone. You're surrounded by people who care about you and who are here to help. East Hampton is a small town. We feel these losses deeply, and while nothing can take away the pain, we can continue to show up for one another with compassion, with presence, and with love. Let us remember Scarlett. Let us hold those still recovering in our thoughts, and let us keep each other close in the days ahead. If we could just have a moment of silence for Scarlett. Thank you. So we're going to start today's work session with a public portion. We ask you to kindly keep your comments to three minutes. We have four topics today. The Amagansett Lighting District update with Becky Hanson and Matt Jedlica. The Summer 2025 Recreation Programs with John Rooney. Order Quality Improvements for Coast Guard Housing will be presented by Kim Shaw. And then we have Britton Bitts Street and Scott Bradley to talk about and give us an update on the Amagansett Life Saving Station. That'll be followed by liaison reports and resolutions. So I have signups. I've got the Sustainability Committee, Jane Mearing and Biddle Duke. Welcome. Since it's both of you, we'll give you a little leeway there.
Largely is moral support.
Because you know I'm a shy and retiring flower.
Exactly.
And before I start, thank you for those words, and do just personally want to condolences and love to the families, the young people involved in the loss in the school community. So, thank you. Okay, so Biddle and I are members of the Sustainability Committee, and we're speaking on behalf of the whole committee unanimously. We, you know, the new reformed committee, the Sustainability Committee, obviously, we've all been looking at the very strong resolution that was passed and the mandate, and just one of the topics that we have sort of have have settled on as a core initiative is a broad topic called sustainable land management. And we sent you a brief advisory memo this morning by email, and I won't go into it, but that that topic can encompass lots of different initiatives that we'll be working on. But we started just looking at existing codes, and one of the things that we noted was there are a few pieces of legislation that had come before this board over the last two or three years. I think some of them might have proceeded to to the members here. And we noticed that two of them, they had gone to public work session, public hearing, but I don't think they were voted and adopted. And then there was another piece that has been adopted, but we we wanted to raise it again. So we just want to come today and flag those. And those pieces of legislation, very briefly, were, there was a piece of draft legislation about bamboo, the invasiveness of it, and the responsibility to keep it from spreading. There was a piece of legislation that related to protecting trees in the town right of way, especially around construction, you know, parcels that are under construction. And then there's a third one, which was the staking, required staking of clearing on the site and on the survey for projects that require building permit. That last one, we believe, well, we know was passed. It's in the code. We don't think the other two ultimately made it to votes and and passage. So I won't go through our different suggestions. But bottom line, we wanted to come back. We think those were good pieces of legislation. We know things happen. No blame that they didn't get across the finish line. But we'd like to recommend, if possible, that this board bring them back in the second half of the year. I don't know if any new work sessions. I think the bamboo legislation was the most complicated one in there. I was one of the people who spoke at the public hearing and probably mucked up the works. But so, and we'd like to be helpful and help them get across the finish line. So I'll leave it to you to read our little memo. Obviously, if you had any questions for us, we're happy to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't really add anything. Jane covered it all.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Next up is Tracy Stoloff. Welcome, Tracy.
Hi, thank you. Excuse my appearance. I just stepped out of the bakery to jump here. I'm appearing in front of the town.
Could you just speak into the microphone? Thank you.
I'm appearing in front of the town board today on behalf of Chris Winkler. I have sent the board a few letters regarding the nonrenewal of his commercial slip in Montauk that he's had for 40 years. I'm just going to read you this letter. Dear East Hampton Town Board, and it's it's my understanding the Harbor and Docks Committee helped the board come to this decision, along with Harbor Master Tim Treadwell. Dear East Hampton Town Board, Harbor and Docks Committee, and Harbor Master Chief Treadwell, I'm writing on behalf of Chris Winkler in reference to the notice from Harbor Master Tim Treadwell regarding the nonrenewal of his commercial dock slip for the 2025-26 season. Mr. Winkler respectfully requests that the town board review the decision of the Harbor and Docks Committee and the town, East Hampton Town Board regarding this decision. He requests a formal review and hearing regarding the nonrenewal of his commercial slip, which he has maintained for over 40 years without issue. Mr. Winkler has fully complied with all federal mandates concerning his involvement, along with Brian and Asa Gosman, in the fisheries conspiracy case. Chris is currently being considered for a full pardon related to this case. Chris Winkler will be released in seven days on June 24, at which time he will have fulfilled his obligations set forth by the federal government. He was tried in a federal court and has adhered to the mandates outlined by Senior Judge Joan R. Azarak of the United States District Court for the Eastern District of New York. In her sentencing, Judge Azarak specifically maintained that Mr. Winkler be allowed to maintain his fishing permits, enabling him to earn a living and fulfill his financial obligations to the federal government. Given these circumstances, Mr. Winkler respectfully asked the town and the Harbor and Docks Committee to reconsider its decision regarding the nonrenewal of his commercial dock slip. If the town board and Harbor Committee were to remove all slipholders based on fishery violations, the town dock would be empty of vessels. Chris and his team, his attorney, would be happy to meet with the town board and the Harbor Docks Committee to review Judge Azarak's rulings and the reasons why she came to these conclusions regarding his permits and his ability to maintain, his ability to make a living. I have a copy of this. Can I leave one with you?
If you could leave it with the clerk, and she'll make sure we all get a copy. Thank you, Tracy. So that's everyone that signed up. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? Please join us at the podium. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Richard Salter. I just wanted to bring it. During the pandemic, I'll go right to the chase. I'm not going to bore you with a lot of details, but during the pandemic, I took it upon myself to remove invasives, bamboo, number one, that had came, had come encroach from my neighbor. That took a full two years to remove the bamboo. And and then I hired some people to put a big plastic shield down three feet for about 40 or 50 feet of my property to prevent the bamboo from coming. And now I'm dealing with the Japanese knotweed, which is actually worse than the bamboo. But what's happening is the bamboo has kind of snuck all the way around and is coming in from another area. I'm just asking you guys maybe to do something like Brookhaven did, to make the neighbor responsible for the encroachment of bamboo, because, I mean, it's a never-ending battle, and unfortunately, a lot of neighbors really don't care. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Would anyone else like to address the board? Gloria? Morning, Gloria.
Good morning, Gloria Frazee. I'm speaking for myself, not for any organization that I belong to. We had a great turnout this past Saturday, right here in front of Town Hall, for No King's Day. That was really wonderful to know that many people cared and would stand up for democracy, for justice, for the community that we all want to see, and start building that. In addition to these really big groups, there's another smaller group that meets every Thursday at Hook Mill Park on Methodist Lane. This is actually part of a national group. We are meeting at 7:00 to 7:30 every single Thursday night in the local time zone across the United States, and also in a few other countries. So this is another way of coming together, standing up for compassionate democracy, to resist hate, fear, and despair. And it's a wonderful way to meet other caring people in our community and come together and support our neighbors, support freedom. In addition to that, we're joining with Ola of Eastern Long Island, who has a program called Stand and Protect. So there is a group on WhatsApp chain, so if we need to show up somewhere to take photos or videos of any injustice, we are on call to do that. So there are trainings for that, how to handle this, how to help our neighbors, and I hope that people will join me. So beaconfordemocracy.org and olaofeasternlongisland.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Would anyone else like to address the board? Jason, is there anyone on the line?
Yes, we have currently five callers on the line, so I'll unmute them. First caller. Hello, first caller, ending in 2611. You're on the air.
Okay. Hi, my name is Dawn Brophy, and I'm calling about the lighting district in Amagansett, the proposal that, you know, citizens have put forth, and I appreciate the town board's support, and look forward to this process going on in a positive fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Jason, if you could put the next caller through?
Absolutely. Caller ending 6412. You're on the air. Hello.
Hi, this is Rhona Klopman, and I'm calling in as Chair of the Amagansett Citizens Advisory Committee. I'm here to express our strong support for the proposed lighting initiative in Amagansett. We have worked, the subcommittee has worked for, I think, approximately nine years to get this before the town board. And as our community grows and thrives, we have to prioritize safety and well-being of all our residents and visitors. The implementation of effective lighting solutions is a critical step towards achieving achieving the goal. And safety is our foremost concern. We have had a few fatalities because the beautiful trees, which we want to see continue to exist in our community, limit the, I call it the Long Island Expressway lighting, above the trees in sporadic places. And we need well-designed lighting to enhance visibility for people, preventing accidents, illuminating our streets and gatherings, in gathering spaces. We, that would definitely create a safer environment for families and children, so they can walk the streets safely and enjoy our beautiful community. I mean, we have a main street, we have the talkhouse, we have the square, we have businesses, and they all create a lot of pedestrian walking and outdoor activities and patronizing local businesses. And improved lighting can foster a sense of security among the residents and and visitors alike. It will only strengthen the local economy, that people see that our lighting has been, you know, the proposed lighting will be energy efficient and sustainability, and minimize our environmental impact, and and produce a more effective safety factor for the people of our community. I urge the town board to support the lighting proposal. I want to thank Tom Flight, our liaison, a wonderful liaison who has brought this before the board. And I think we are investing in a brighter, more vibrant future to have us illuminate our paths and ensure a safe and welcoming environment for everyone who calls Amagansett home. So I hope you will support the proposal and bring it to fruition, so we can see the beginnings of new lighting on Main Street and Amagansett. And I believe we're doing it from the Amago Station to the train station. So I thank you very much and hope you will put this in effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhona. Jason, if you could put the next caller through?
Absolutely. Caller ending 27777.
Hi, this is Michael Chinkway, and I am also on the lighting committee with the Citizens Advisory of Amagansett, also a 45-year merchant on Main Street. And I totally support the lighting plan that we've worked with your engineers with, along with better lighting in the parking lot, now that we have great restaurants in in town. So I'm in full support. I'd also like to thank the town board and my wonderful committee at the Life Saving Station for for just talking with you guys today and a great update. So thanks, Scott and Britton. Thank you, town board. And thank you for everything you guys do for us. Good day.
Thank you, Michael. All right, Jason, if you could put the next caller through?
Absolutely. Caller ending 0976. You're on the air.
Hi. First, I wanted to acknowledge the opening comments about the tragic accident in the Springs. Thank you for mentioning that. It really, it really was a tragedy for the community, and our hearts and thoughts are with all the families. My name is Scott Beck. I've lived in the Northwest Woods of East Hampton for over 32 years. I'm calling to express my thanks to the board for approving the new really cool-looking traffic circle at the corner of Stephen Hance Path and Long Lane, and also thanks to the Highway Department for creating a safe and really good-looking traffic circle. As a town resident, I'm thankful, but more importantly, as a parent, I'm relieved. I no longer hold my breath when my kids grab the car to head into town. I no longer have to see the fear on others' faces when they try and dash through the intersection, and I no longer have to endure the verbal or other exchanges with those who refuse to obey traffic rules and are cause of such unsafe conditions. I'm confident many of you drive through that part of town regularly and have to believe you feel the same way. You know, I know with any job any of us has, we always receive some sort of criticism, whether fair or unwarranted. In fact, I remember some of the town, of the resident feedback for this project, you know, just put in a couple of stop signs, just paint with some lines, or it's a total waste of money. But when it comes to the building of this traffic circle, I can only say, well done. You've not only solved a serious traffic situation, but you put safety first, and you've preempted numerous traffic accidents and no doubt, serious injuries. So as a town resident and a parent, I just want to say thank you. A special shout out to Councilmember Lee for his initial and ongoing support through this whole process. And my only suggestion for the next order of business for the town board might be the how to get it to stop raining on the east end. So with that, thank you very much.
We're working on that, Scott. Thank you. If you could put the next caller through?
Caller ending 8186. You're on the air.
Thank you very much. Hi, this is Martin Drew, Spring. Yes, I just wanted to ask the board again, when we might be dealing with some of these traffic issues that happened at Ametsville Park Road that I've been active about. Apparently, we had an accident there last year. The traffic conditions are unbearable. When you go down there on a Friday or Saturday night, they're actually dangerous. I supplied your town attorney with the deed for the gift of the park to the town that says that road is to be unobstructed, so there can be free passage by foot or by vehicle to and from the park. So this unlawful parking situation that is ongoing down there is to be remedied. So we're going to rely on the town highway superintendent as an elected official to unilaterally solve that problem for us, because apparently seems to be a lot of political finger pointing and stalling on what's going on with the situation. And I would like to know what is going on with this situation. We were promised they were going to deal with this effectively back in the day. We're going on four years now, so all the folks who've approached you today, I hope they don't expect immediate results from this town board or any town board, because the reality is you guys take years and almost decades to deal with things, which is shameful in itself. So we're just going to ask the town attorney that he gets back to us in writing and let us know as a community in our neighborhood what's going on and what we can expect. I mean, he should realize he represents the constituents of the community as well. So he doesn't need to hide any information from us. Actually, we'd like him to be transparent in all things. So we're thinking that we need help with this. We're wondering why also they're continuing to open on, I guess, with their outdoor dining situation. Apparently, that requires a CFO, which they don't have, and apparently they're running like they would normally. So we'd like to know who's responsible for, I mean, bringing lawful enforcement to shutting them down in the meanwhile, until they do get their legal affairs in order. And apparently, there's a bunch of them that need to be dealt with and spoken to, because you guys are only addressing a bit of what goes on down there. So when they added that new residential lot to the commercial footprint, how come nobody forced that to be a parking lot if they're down there operating a restaurant that requires 30 off-site, onsite parking spots? So there's something going on here, and you guys aren't realizing that there's been a problem with the across-the-street parking at number 25 since, oh, I guess I saw it as 1969. So just know it wasn't me that called back complaining. I would have been a three-year-old calling around my mother's floor. But anyway, we're hoping you guys will deal with all this stuff. And please reach out to your elected highway superintendent to resolve the problem if none of you politically want to stand forward and do what's right for our community. So I don't know what you're doing, but we'd like you to do it as soon as possible, and you should be shutting down the restaurant, Rita Cantina, until they have their CFO. So please consider all that and take my comments to heart. And please have your town attorney reply to me in writing, because none of you seem to want to answer anything on air. So I'll just put it on him. Thank you.
And we have, and we have no other callers.
Okay, so we're going to move on to topics, and the first topic is the Amagansett Lighting District update with our town administrator Becky Hanson and our engineer Matt Jedlica.
Matt, supervisor, if you don't mind.
Sure, you want to give a setup?
No, not a, not a setup, just two, two comments, since public time is closed. The Critical Root Zone Protection, we're going to bring back as part of discussion with the Highway Department about our right-of-ways, reclaiming our right-of-ways, protecting our right-of-ways. That's in the forthcoming. And next is I'm a minority property owner of a property that is in the Amagansett Lighting District. I feel no bias to this project. I look forward to continue the discussion on the project.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Matt.
So good morning, Madam Supervisor, Town Board, Matt Jedlica from L.K. McLean Associates. So if you guys remember, we were previously hired to do a feasibility study for the historic lighting in Amagansett. We provided the study in October of last year and November of last year, did a presentation, kind of running through the study. So just a brief study, brief summary of it, we're really looking to set up So just a brief summary of it, we're really looking to set up historic lighting fixtures, full cutoff, International Dark Sky Association-approved fixtures, LED fixtures, so energy efficient, warm color, the 2700 Kelvin. So it's a nice warm glow as opposed to the bright, you know, bluish lights. Spaced approximately every 100 feet, starting from Windmill down to Meeting House, that was the initial cutoff. And we did, as part of the proposal that we gave to do the future engineering of it, provide an add-on to go down to the fire department. So if you guys want to continue it all the way down to the fire department, you know, that's, we can do that.
So Matt, that was just on the north side, though, to be clear, correct?
Just on the, well, from both sides to Meeting House and then north side to the fire department, from Meeting House down there. You know, the 100-foot spacing will be adjusted based on any sort of obstructions. We're really not looking to cut down any trees or modify any of the right-of-way. It's going to be a targeted lighting, trying to improve safety. But the next phase, so that initial phase was the study, but the next phase is really to try to bring it to fruition by doing a field survey of everything, so boots on the ground and survey, picking up all the trees, any sort of driveway aprons, and, you know, really delineating the spacing, working with the utility companies in order to, you know, not have any conflicts with underground utilities or anything like that, and really just come up with construction specifications with the wiring and all that sort of stuff and putting a bid package together so it can be put out to public bid and then eventually hire a contractor to do the job. The proposal also includes the construction support, which is Construction Contract Administration and construction inspection, not full-time but part-time inspection. So Becky, if you want to...
Sure.
So the part that Matt had just mentioned, the second part of this project, would be to hire L.K. McLean to provide a secondary engineering portion. And the proposal that he submitted before you, the town board would have to issue additional debt to pay for that study. So just as a refresher for the public's knowledge, any special district is responsible for paying the debt that's incurred for projects within their district. So in 2023, you issued debt in the small amount of $12,600 to pay for the initial part that Matt and McLean have provided to you for your consideration. The debt service of that was issued that has been on tax bills for residents that live within the street lighting district. You can see it on your tax bill. To move forward again on the secondary portion, the town would have to issue, again, a second round of debt, an estimated amount of around $73,000 right now. The period of probable usefulness for this debt would only be five years at this point, meaning that the district has to repay within five years. Based on the current interest rates on that five-year PPU for $73,000, the first-year repayment would be just over $15,000. So what would happen is if the town, if the board decides to issue the second round of debt and hire McLean to do the engineering study, it goes out to bid, you accept the bid, you want to move forward with a construction project, the construction portion of the debt issuance would be subject to a public hearing as a special district, and the PPU on that would be for 10 years. So we would take this initial debt that we've started and the second round, we would roll that into the new construction debt. So it would go from a five-year PPU to a 10-year PPU. So in the 2025 budget, the Amagansett Street Lighting, the expenditures were just over $63,000. The amount of debt that was recurred to repay back on that first bond of the $12,600 was under $4,000. So, and again, I'm just talking in general terms. We're not really getting into, you know, I live on Bluff Road or I live on Oak Lane, you know, what are my taxes going to be right now? But again, generally speaking, so that for that $3,848 was 6% of the total expenditures of the street lighting district in the 2025 budget. So in theory, if you're looking at your tax bill and the Amagansett Street Lighting District is on your tax bill, you can theorize that 6% of that amount that you're paying was towards the debt for the feasibility study. So, and again, if we're looking at a possible $15,000 in the first year of new debt, roughly that amount would increase five times. In looking at some tax bills within the district, a home that has a full value assessment of just over $1 million, your total tax bill towards the Amagansett Street Lighting District was $11.92, and 6% of that is 72 cents. If you have a home valued, your full value is just under 2.3 million, your Amagansett Street Lighting was $26, 6% of that, you know, is $1.55, and so on. So again, roughly multiplying that by five because the debt is going to go from about, you know, around $4,000 to $15,000. So, you know, for some, but again, the larger discussion is going to be if you get to the construction portion of it because, again, it could be millions of dollars that would have to be repaid within the 10 years. But again, you know, we'll have that conversation at that time, and that debt issuance would be subject to a public hearing. So for now, for the board's consideration is, you know, in order to issue that debt to move forward, to adopt a bond resolution, you know, how, you know, if you feel that adequate word is out to those in the street lighting district, I mean, given some of these rough numbers of what the additional debt could be, at least in that first year, because in theory, by the second year, hopefully, you're at the point that you decided to move forward with the project, and then your next round of debt would be for the 10-year PPU. So that initial $73,000 would now be stretched out over 10 years as opposed to five years. Again, whether you feel that word is out in an appropriate manner at this time, you know, having another meeting about it with residents in the area, so that's something for you to consider. And then again, you know, we can issue the debt at any time.
Thank you. Thank you, Becky. Not that we have a lot of negotiation room in it, but do you know what the interest rate is on those bonds?
3%.
3%, thank you. So my only question is with the five-year PPU, there's not a permissive referendum after that, so that once we bond, we can go immediately to...
It's immediate because it's for a study. Any study has a five-year PPU, and it's immediately available.
So is there, you said a 10-year PPU, is there any way to extend that to a 15 to 20?
That's based...
For the...
Period of probable usefulness. That is, a PPU is determined by state finance law, so depending on the type of project it is. So we really can't, I mean, that's not really, that's not our decision.
Thank you.
So Bond Council tells us we have to do, or reminds us.
Yeah, I just would like just make a comment on the 2700 Kelvin, and I believe that's dark sky compliant. This Energy and Sustainability Committee, which is now the Sustainability Committee, at the time when we did the streetlights, were in favor of the 2700 Kelvin, which is a real warm glow as opposed to 8,000, 5,000 Kelvin blaring lights. And so I know at that time, there was concern by the, some concern in the community for compliance with dark skies. However, we changed hundreds of light bulbs to LED at 2700 Kelvin throughout the town, and I believe we had one call on someone because it was, the lamp was directed into their house, and it just needed readjustment. So no one actually even noticed that change. I think this would be a great thing for that district.
Right, so these lamps that we're proposing are similar to the ones in Sec Harbor, where the LED lamp is actually in the upper part of the housing. So there's, you know, it's not even that it needs any shielding, but it's in the upper part, there's no way for the light to escape and go up. So it's all down lighting.
And that was, that in Sec Harbor is also a lighting district also, and that's on Division Street, on 114, I believe is the same lamps that we have used at Montauk Docks, too.
Yep. Yeah, and so since Steve O'Brien is not here to talk about the lighting that goes into the parking lot, which is not part of this, but would be a separate thing. So the Parks Department and Buildings and Grounds, Buildings and Grounds would be able to change out the fixture heads that are within the parking lot, but they're not able to install any sort of new fixtures. So we kind of did a brief study and a photometric plan showing some additional lighting within the parking lot, but that would be a separate capital project for the town to consider if you wanted to add some lighting in the back parking lot.
Yeah, no, thank you. And we reviewed that with the Amagansett Lighting Committee as well. It's really that one central area to the east as you go into the parking lot. It's kind of a dark zone, and so, you know, the addition, I think it was one lighting pole?
We added, I think in that section, we might have added three.
Three, okay.
One on the west side and two on the east side. So as you come in the driveway to the parking lot, you have additional lighting.
Yeah, thank you. And then, just for those who know, and then to explain the extension from, to the train station with the lighting on the north side, are those, confirming, are those higher fixtures or are those low-level fixtures to be?
Well, throughout the project, it's 12-foot fixtures. If, I don't know if there's a reason why they would need to be lower, but if people want them lower, we can have a lower fixture or some sort of bollard-type fixture along the sidewalk during that stretch.
Okay, thank you. Last thing, I remember, Tom, I think the Cobra Heads were also staying on the poles. They weren't going to be removed?
There's only a few Cobra Heads.
27, too.
Yeah, yep.
So those are staying?
Well, we probably should take them out, to be honest with you, you know, so it's not a confused lighting look. And the photometrics that we had done, it's, we tried to achieve like a full coverage. That's why the spacing is approximately 100 feet, just trying to cover all spaces with, you know, some sort of light.
So the question before the board is, at our July 3 meeting, do we want to move forward with bonding the $70,000 and hiring McLean to take it to the next step?
Yeah, I'm supportive in concept for sure. I think that this area could use improved lighting. But I guess my question would be for Tom. Obviously, there's some public support, but have you talked directly to the people who will be paying, you know, whose tax bills, to be honest, to broad support?
It's a very good question. I've had discussion with Becky as well. It's just, you know, what is the most effective means of getting that communication out to the entire tax district? Do we do a mailing, which we haven't done in many, many years, or do we consider that a public hearing would provide adequate public notice of, look, this is what your potential tax impact is? I think in order us to bond, we need to do one of those two to ensure everybody has had the opportunity to.
When you say, do you mean to bond for the construction or do you mean to bond for...
I think to take on this additional debt, you know, what do we as a board consider is adequate notification to the public that this is going to be an incremental, you know, tax that you're going to be paying? Is this meeting adequate enough? It is a public meeting, it's one that, you know, we've not yet reached conclusion on whether it needs to be a letter or, you know, how we go about that.
So that's, I guess, part of this discussion today. So there's 1,500 parcels in the Amagansett Lighting District, correct? So...
Different take, yeah.
So...
Do we have any idea, like approximate, what, how much of their tax bill, like what, obviously depends on their assessment and everything, but what is the type of dollar figure that people would see?
Um, yeah, I just kind of went through that. So for, so in the 2025 budget, the entire Amagansett Street Lighting, their budget was just over $63,000. And the debt payment on the $12,600 was about 6% of that overall $63,000 and change. So it was $3,848. So when I pulled a couple tax bills from within the district, so again, a home that's, your full value is just over $1 million, you paid, when you paid your tax bill this year, your Amagansett Street Lighting portion was $11.92. So 6% of that went towards to pay the debt, which was 72 cents.
So it's very minimal.
It's minimal, and again, rough...
For that, with that study, and once you add any engineering, and I don't know, do we have an estimate for construction as to what the total would be?
Well, we did provide an estimate of about 1.3 million, which included the R fee within that.
Right, so it's 1.3 million, 10 years. And I don't know if we have the numbers of what it would then be for a home assessed at the moment.
That I don't, because, again, by the time that rolls around, you don't know what your, you really don't know what your interest rate is going to be. You know, we're fluctuating right now as it is, you know, compared to six months ago, to 12 months ago from, you know, when we did our last debt sale. But again, the first year on $73,000 that you're issuing now for the second study, it's roughly, you know, it's $15,000 as opposed to the three and change in the 2025 budget. So it's a roughly, you know, five-time increase, so.
But per taxpayer, it's still, you know, not a lot.
Again, without getting into individual, you know...
But it will be a hit when it's one foot, when the project is, if we award the job and go to construction, it's a $1.3 million project.
Yeah, so I...
That debt issuance will be subject to a public hearing.
Right, I'm supportive. It just seems to me like this is the time we make the decision, because I think if we commit to this money, we want to be pretty sure we're going to go. And so, Tom, I defer to you. In my mind, if we had a public hearing here, I mean, I don't, I'm not suggesting we mail to everybody, but just making sure that people know what they're getting into as much as we can.
Right, I mean, I think in terms of moving forward this project, if you, as my colleagues, are comfortable that this is adequate public notice to take on the additional debt for the engineering part only, you know, let's get those plans together and then let's move forward to a later date with a public hearing for the issuance of the debt for the actual project itself. I mean, just using Becky's rough numbers, I mean, you're talking, if I'm getting this right, roughly about, multiply that by five, you know, the $3 on a million-dollar property, sorry, a million-dollar property.
And again, and this is subject to change. I just want that out there, that I am not 100% committing to these numbers.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Becky, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, it's okay.
It's very helpful to know like that.
But it's always the question comes up, and I certainly understand that from a taxpayer's perspective, but, you know, they just have to bear in mind, too, you know, until, you know, that budget is adopted and we have all of our final numbers, you know, for those particular districts, you know, and by the time we actually do issue the debt, I mean, I'm saying 3% now, it could go up, it could go down. So just that, very roughly speaking.
So there's a public need for this, there's a public safety need for this. I'm supportive of this phase here. So, you know, I would be inclined to move forward on that. When we get closer to the construction, there's going to be more discussion about what the design is, what the features on the poles, all of this, which we've done in the past, that's the real nuts and bolts, but we have to get to the survey. Heavy work, I believe I walked with PSENG and you and Altis and Matt, where we're doing this years ago. I think this is something that should move forward. My only question to you is, if I may have a million-dollar house in the lighting district, can please let me know?
We can disclose where this particular property is, but it's there.
I'm supportive of moving forward because, you know, I don't know how, it's public safety. And the thing about a district tax for this, well, that's a big consideration considering how everything is rising so drastically and across all sectors. But I also think that it's a real need there, and I think that that will be, everyone in that district will be benefited by better lighting in Amagansett. But I do want to, folks, to know before they go, you know, full disclosure of some idea of if we continue and continue and continue, what's the total cost we're looking at, a ballpark figure, at least that people can have an idea. And for those, you know, in the district, despite the land value, right, which here is astonishing, people bought their houses 40 years ago, doesn't reflect necessarily the financial situation that they're in. I think I would like them to have those numbers in front of them.
For the total capital project?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So again, and it could be multi-pronged approach, I mean, not just the public hearing on the debt issuance, but certainly the CAC's, you know, meeting, you know, just going through sort of the proposal again itself and some of those numbers, you know, when it comes up at that time, and not just having just a public hearing on the debt issuance.
So is the board comfortable then with moving forward on July 3 with a bond for $70,000 to proceed to hire McLean?
Yes. Yeah, I lean yes, too. I hope that the newspapers will maybe write about this and mention that if anybody has strong objections, they should reach out because this is the notice. Because if we, if there was a wave of objections, I don't anticipate that to be the case, it would be nice to know now, even though it's a small amount. If we're not pretty sure we're moving forward, then I wouldn't want to waste anybody's money. But like everybody else, I support the project. I think it's necessary. I just want to make sure that the people who are most affected have a chance to object if they have any objections. But I'm supportive of this time. If anything happens in the next two weeks, Tom, you know, I'll let you know before that resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our Superintendent of Recreation, John Rooney, to present summer 2025 recreation programs. Welcome, John. I can still say good morning.
Good morning.
Just under the...
Patrick's going to get up on PowerPoint. You know, the weather's not ready for summer. We are... Yeah, we're just going to... Great, thanks. Yeah, we're just going to talk a little bit about beaches and then go into programming. Go to the second page. Great. All right. Just as a review for folks, the lifeguard hours for our beaches, which are all open now, are nine in the morning till five. For the ocean beaches and the bay beaches are 10 to 5. And they're all ready for business. And there's also daily paid parking available at a couple of locations. So at South Edison Beach and Kirk Park out in Montauk, we have, Park Mobile app is available for parking out there. And we even added some extra parking spaces on South Emerson. It's right over by South Edison to expand the parking there during the summer, over by South Edison Beach as well. And then for this summer, started yesterday, Atlantic Beach, paying for daily parking is now through Park Mobile app. It used to be just go to the booth and do it that way. So it's the same system that's used out in Montauk. So that's live at the moment.
And we should probably, it just reminds me, we've got Patrick Dorenza, our Public Information Officer here, too. We probably, when we get close to the Fourth of July weekend, we should probably do a post about Park Mobile so that folks, you know, that are visiting or, you know, can download that app.
Yeah.
Because we're using it at the airport, too. So that's.
That's right, yeah, they just.
Where, you know, that's the app throughout the town.
And just a reminder, Atlantic Avenue, even though it's coming towards that holiday weekend, it's no weekends and no holidays in Atlantic, just weekdays. And that hasn't changed. That's the way it's always been. But it's set up accordingly, so even though it's there. And so that's just some announcements regarding beaches. So the programming, I'm just going to go through the different programming opportunities that are available for the summer. So at the Lieutenant Lee Hayes Youth Park, as usual, we're going to be running our tennis clinics during the summer for grades, kindergarten through sixth grade. These run, depending on which session you sign up for, each twice a week for eight weeks. And they start June 30th, go through the 21st of August. Basketball clinics also happen at the Lieutenant Lee Hayes Youth Park, same grades, kindergarten through sixth grade. These run in the evening where the tennis I just mentioned runs in the morning. These are also twice a week for the eight weeks. And then we have our Games and Crafts program at Spring School that runs for grades kindergarten through sixth grade. These are weekly sessions that you sign up for. You sign up prior to the morning session or the afternoon. Some folks sign up for both simultaneously. And they run for one week at a time. We run it for the eight weeks. Some kids do just the morning, some afternoon, some two weeks, some the whole summer. Everybody's different. So.
It's nice for parents. It gives them flexibility, too, to have that.
Yeah. Yep. And then next page, we'll get there ready. We also have the coaching staff from the high school, Dave Conlin, Thomas Nelson, running men's basketball during the summer over the high school. It's for 10th grade and up. So it's an opportunity for the players of a little bit higher level to go up there and play in the evenings. That's four times a week for eight weeks. And that's happening at the high school. And then out in Montauk, ongoing is pickleball. Pickleball is very popular. And we have everything from beginners to like really advanced players who are like really into it playing. And just a reminder, the weekends right now, we're having it residence only. Its testimony to the program has become so popular that we've had to make some adjustments. We're trying that out for a while for the summer. During the week, though, it's still open to residents, non-residents, like it always has been. And if there's interest in that, we have the gym schedules come out every month, and that has what levels are, what times, on what days. So if you need to find that out. And we also have the Tous, our Town Open Water Swim Training. This is for adults. Terry Treadwell runs this, ran it last year as well. We run two sessions for five weeks. This is if you're really serious about your open water swimming, maybe you're, you know, a triathlete, maybe you do swimming competitions. This is a great way to tune up for those things. And we like to say, if you're not tousped, you're toast, if you're doing those things. So, yeah. Next page. Our Summer Recreation Swimming Program, it's a free program. We run it for two weeks at a time. It's for ages four and up. It's 30 minutes each weekday morning for two weeks. The unique thing about this program is that it changes location every two weeks. So the first two weeks are in Havens Beach and Sag Harbor. Then it moves to Maidstone Beach and then out to Montauk, Gin Beach. And then at the end of the summer, comes back to Big Alberts. And it runs there for two weeks as well. And then we have our nipper guards, the next age up. We run that program for ages six to eight, training the next level up, ages six to eight. And that's twice a week in the mornings. And we run that at Gin Beach. And we also run it at Big Alberts all summer. And then that concludes with our nipper guard tournament. And as you see on there, we have water events on one day, on the 28th of July. And on the 29th, we have beach events. And those are, the first one, the water events are at Albert's Landing, and then we move over to Atlantic Beach, Atlantic Avenue. So that's the nipper guard program. And then after that, we have our junior lifeguards, which we just finished up all of our testing, evaluating. We still have like a couple more weekends left. But those kids are all getting ready for the summer program that runs from July 21st through July 27th. Then we have the tournament on the last, the first weekend in August, the second and third. And that's for ages nine to 14. And we run that out at, out in Montauk at Kirk and then also here at Atlantic Avenue in Amagansett. So excited about that program. It's huge. We got lots of kids for that program. And then cadets, they start up. That's for ages 15 over at Atlantic Avenue for the summer. And they start up as well the 21st. And then the last page. All registration for all the programs can be done online. Just go onto town's website on the recreation webpage. And we also just want to give a reminder, if someone's looking for use of a beach wheelchair, they're available at all of our beaches. See the lifeguards. You can also contact our office. Sometimes folks are, want to, maybe a couple of weeks ahead of time, set it up. They can contact my emails on there, contact myself. We'll get in touch with lifeguards and help you to get it set up. We also are putting up beach wheelchair information QR codes at the beaches this summer. So when you scan that, it takes you to the beach wheelchair information page. So it's just an extra way to help to get the word out about how that program operates. And that's available as well. That's what we have going on for the summer.
And how is registration looking for our summer programs, John?
Pretty normal for this time of year. It's happening. This past spring, just to give you an idea of the amount of kids that we had doing the testing. So just nippers alone during the springtime, 176 kids testing to try to qualify for nippers for the summer. And the junior lifeguards, we had 352. Those were all being tested and evaluated at the YMCA during the springtime. So that certainly gives us anticipation. We're going to have a lot of kids certainly in those programs. So.
And we're good with staffing?
We are, yeah. Very strong with staffing this year. That's it. Thanks to the town board, especially with lifeguards.
Yeah, John, thank you to you and your staff. I know they run a great, great programs there. I know you work hand in hand with Steve O'Brien to make sure the facilities are up to top notch for the children and for some of the adults also then, too. We hear that at the Montauk Playhouse a lot with pickleball and then, too, with Brian. So please thank your staff on behalf of the town board, too.
I will, yeah. I would echo that. Your staff does a great job here. I would just add one thing to public users, and I've mentioned, discussed this to you, John, you know, users at the pickleball courts, users at the beach, you know, please behave appropriately. We hear reports of children being sworn out for accidentally going into the gym during pickleball. Totally inappropriate. You know, this is a town resource to be shared, and we expect you to behave accordingly.
John, I, when I see swim for free for kids, that's just, you know, the whole philosophy of waterproofing our children and that you provide that, that service is just phenomenal. And, you know, I work with you weekly and you run a great ship and you're wonderful to work with.
Thank you.
I would just echo what every other board member said. Thank you, John. Appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
All right. And we're ready.
We're ready.
We just need the sun.
Just need the sun.
One thing.
A little chilly today.
We've been waiting for summer.
The water's only 59 degrees this morning.
Out. Thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so, John, could you tell Kim to come in, please? Because she's, she's up, otherwise. Welcome, Kim.
Afternoon.
Got a minute?
Sorry about that. So I'm here today to talk about funding innovative alternative septic systems for the Coast Guard. The Coast Guard engineers approached my department about funding 17 new IA system to be installed on multiple residential properties. We have been trying to get neighborhoods to do this for years. We started this program in 2018. And this, to me, presents a significant opportunity to upgrade a large number of systems in a high resident, high-density residential area and a water protection district. We have passed this by the CPF Water Quality Committee, and they are supportive of funding. What we don't know right now is exactly how much money it's going to be. It's going to be significant because it's prevailing wage, federal government. So the committee has recommended to the town board to fund at 65% of eligible costs. And that's what we do for all large-scale commercial projects, too. So it's consistent with how we've been allocating funding for these upgrades. So right now, I'm just waiting for plans. We have engineering design to 65%. And what they submitted was to, it seemed really high, but a lot of the costs that were included in the engineering were not specifically for the IA installment. So we're still refining that. It's great to know that the Coast Guard is also extending public water to the properties in Springs that don't have it, upgrading and modernizing the interior of the properties. So it's all in all like a great package. So it's, they're going to be energy efficient and then have these new innovative alternative septic systems. Throughout that area of Springs, we have extremely high groundwater tables. So this is a win-win for the environment. I think these projects are going to also be eligible for Seppa County funding through their SEPP program and New York State. So there'll be significant offsets. The county just updated their funding allocation. So they give 15,000 and another five for low to moderate income. And the state gives 10. And these projects are all eligible individually. If we were going to treat it that way, $20,000 apiece from the town. So we're in the process right now, waiting for those 90% plans. It's going to go out to bid. And then maybe sometime, probably early next year, they'd actually be eligible to make an application to us because they have to go to the health department, get approval and all that stuff. They just wanted to know if the town was supportive of funding these upgrades.
So when this initially came to the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee, there was a little bit of a sticker shock on here.
Yes.
Because of the prevailing wage. It's another municipality. It's a large grouping of 17, 17 properties, most density down in area, which is almost some of the headwaters, a little bit down by Pussy Pond in that area. I was shocked by the number, but understanding the review and that some of those numbers might be backed out and that also there'd be grant funding from the state, which might be increasing theirs, hopefully, potentially the county, then, too. I think it's a good opportunity for us to partner with another municipality within our township, that being the federal government, I guess. So I'd be supportive of this, but, you know, and to get this information out here and let's see what it comes back at.
Sure. And another thing, they just let me know is that they're probably going to phase it because the, between the improvements to the properties and the IAs, they just, the budget isn't there. So they're probably going to do it in two phases.
And a lot of those homes are being lived in also, too.
Yes.
Yeah, I support this. First of all, living in Springs, knowing the high water table issues there and how that impacts the creek and everywhere else across. Also, you know, 17 homes. It is a large singular number, but we would be thrilled if 17 homes, we are thrilled, when homes come in and, and apply for this program. The, there's a septic upgrade program that's available to all town residents, where you receive funding from town and you receive funding from the county to upgrade your septic system, septic system to a low nitrogen system. So I think this is consistent with all the goals we set forth and in a very dense area that has impacts. So, Kim, if, if, if anyone comes in for a septic upgrade grant, what can they receive from the town and the county?
Town, county, and state. So it's 20 max from the town, 15 is the low end. And then it's 15 from the county and 10 from the state. Low to moderate gets additional bump up of another 5,000. And I think if you do a low pressurized drain field also, it's another five. So there's a lot of funding available. And then the county offers a low-interest loan for 15 years to offset additional costs. But one thing that we're finding in a lot of areas where we have extremely high groundwater is oftentimes, people don't test their private wells. And when they go to the health department to do these upgrades, they find that their well is, has been contaminated by their cesspools. So that's another good thing, just for people that are on wells, get your water tested regularly.
Kim, so just going back to Kate's point, too, just with what's available, can we just clarify what is available for people building ADUs, detached and detached? I think there's some, there's a little bit of gray area. I believe with attached, it's one rule, and with detached, it's a different rule.
So if you build a new separate unit, you will either have to connect to your, upgrade everybody, everybody on site to an IA, or if you can, so the property has to be upgraded if it's a separate unit to an IA.
So if it's a separate, if it's a detached ADU, if it's an attached ADU, there would be potentially funding available?
That would be if they were going to increase the number, if the number of bedrooms was going to increase more than five. So if the existing system could handle the modification to the interior without increasing the number of bedrooms, then they could use the existing system. But that's also eligible for funding. So you could get the $20,000 from the town, up to $20,000 from the town, if you wanted to upgrade.
Perfect, thank you. I mean, just with the proposal you've presented, we digressed a little bit. I would say there's certain things in our control, certain things that are not, you know, prevailing wage is, that's not something we have control over. What we do have control over is the water quality here. And, you know, in terms of use of the CPF funds, I'm supportive of this. I do think it will make significant improvement to our water quality out here. So for me, it's a go.
Great. Yeah, and I, go ahead, Ian.
Oh, sorry. I'm supportive as well. And certainly the Water Quality Advisory Committee and the recommendation from Natural Resources goes a long way. Like everybody else has commented on the price. Would love to do it as, you know, inexpensive as possible, but as Tom said, we don't have control over all of these things. And I think it's a worthy project that I support.
Thank you.
So a couple of years ago, we did that postcard that we mailed out to all town residents. I think it's time we did another one.
Okay.
So maybe there's somebody on your team. I know Melissa's out on maternity leave, but maybe there's somebody on your team that, you know, it's, the copy's basically written. I mean, I think we just, we just have to update it and.
Yeah, Mark and Samantha Schor have taken over a lot of Melissa's workload. But yeah, we can definitely work on getting something out.
Let's meet upon that.
So for next steps, when we hear back from the Coast Guard and the federal feds, information that will come into the office, we'll just get that information to the rest of the town board members on the process where we're going, knowing that they're in the engineering right now.
We'll probably have the chair of the committee come in and one of my staff, and we'll just give an overview of the recommendations for funding. Same process.
Billy Haydock's been doing a really good job of chairing that committee.
Yeah. It's a great committee, really, a great bunch of people that volunteer their time and have quite a bit, a lot of, you know, a lot of work from just this funding source.
Thank you, Kim.
Great, thanks, Kim. All right. So now we're going to welcome the Amagansett Life Saving Station for an update. We've got Britten Bistrion, Scott Bradley, and Stacy Myers here. So I guess it's going to be a tag team.
Is it?
Yes, it is. Good afternoon.
12:30, good morning.
I'm Britten Bistrion, Scott Bradley, and Stacy Myers. We all have the honor of serving as trustees of the Amagansett Life Saving Station, as well as David. The station was built in 1902 and was manned by the U.S. Life Saving Service until 1915, if we could go to the next slide, and became the U.S. Coast Guard. The station became an integral part of American history on June 13, 1942, when the Nazi saboteurs invaded our country with plans to blow up the U.S. Mint in Philadelphia. The plan was thwarted by the men serving at our dear station, who alerted the authorities of the train-bound saboteurs. Telling this story, as well as the many stories of shipwrecks and rescues and service to the greater community, is the backbone of our mission. to the greater community, is the backbone of our mission. We are a robust and vibrant board of trustees, bringing many different skills, ranging from three retired Coast Guard members to lawyers, town board members, craftsmen, writers, educators, and just plain maritime history buffs. Go to the next slide, I think. That's our 2025 programming. Sorry, we're so little. Next one. In 2024, we had another banner year. We hosted the East Hampton Trustees' Largest Clam Contest. We toured over 700 local children through the station and amazed them with stories of shipwrecks and explosives and bravery. We hosted a holiday tree lighting. All the while, we were steadfastly determined to expand our reach, our collection, and continue to build our legacy. Next one. We restored this telephone booth. It's got a really interesting history and returned it home to our site. This one was especially poignant for me as became, between when it was decommissioned from the station and then relocated to Further Lane. It was used as a beach-changing cabana for a Further Lane resident. And in between those two homes, it had, it had a home further up Atlantic Avenue, and my family's homestead, and my father used it as a fort as a young boy because my grandfather was hired to move it. So that was really neat to bring this back to the station, especially for me. The next one. This past weekend, we hosted two milestone events, our annual commemoration of the Nazi saboteur landing and the christening of our very own BB surf boat, which I believe is the next picture, which we named Amagansett. The ceremony on Sunday was held in a traditional Coast Guard format with color guard from the station Montauk, as well as many dignified attendees from decorated retired Coast Guard members, local political figures, and the boat builder who spoke of this crowning passion project, and members of the BB family from Greenport. Next one. As we look ahead to 2025 and beyond, we have our Lobster Bake fundraiser on July 12. It's our main fundraiser, where we invite the community to dine at the station, toast the summer, and all the milestones that we've reached in the last year. Tickets are available both through our website and in person at Amagansett Wines and Spirits in Amagansett. Moving ahead, we have three major projects on the horizon. The last one was, and we hope to be here next year, reporting on how we successfully executed them all. We've decided to pursue the building of a breaches buoy. If you could go back one slide, because this is kind of interesting, on the parcel, which was a rescue technique, was a rescue pulley system, often heavily utilized at lifesaving stations along the shoreline. A few of the trustees will be making a trip to North Carolina to visit a sister station in the Outer Banks, which has a similar installation so that we can ensure historical accuracy. This will be really great for demonstrations and events moving forward. We have to cite it on the site and work through some of the details, but we're, that's our 2025 pursuit number one. The next one. We have voted to pursue the reconstruction of a garage building, which is circled and read on that slide, that sat just west of the station for additional boat and archive storage. We're going to replace it in like and kind. We were also incredibly encouraged when we did a structural investigation that revealed our garage foundation slab was still intact and capable of being reused. So we're actually just citing the, the building right on top of it. And lastly, we're spearheading a massive collections expansion, thanks to David being the maritime treasure hunter that he is. I think he stays up most nights on eBay and making friends with people all over the United States to find us archives, so we hope to report on that next year as well. Next slide. And that's just the long list of people that work on these projects in addition to the four of us in this room, and we really are gracious to the, grateful to the town board for continuing to support our mission and hope that we recognize that we are a real maritime community asset.
Thank you.
Thank you, Britten.
So if I could ask a question, if you don't mind? Sorry, nice try, everyone. Upcoming, some upcoming events that are going to be at the station right now is the Lobster Bake work, your, can you talk about your docent program, Scott, if you don't mind?
Our docent program is something, is focused for us, a big focus for us. It's really important that we, we have more, more open, have the museum open more often. We're only open two days a week because we're limited with the number of docents that we have. So we're really out, going to outreach to the senior center and outreach to the community and ask people to participate. We're also considering paying our docents because it's such a treasure that we have in this community, and it's a shame that we're only able to keep it open two days a week because the limited amount of docents. So I encourage the community and anyone interested to give us, reach out, give us a shout, and we'd love to have them participate with us.
And Stacy, if you don't mind me asking about the collaboration with the Marine Museum?
Absolutely. My name is Stacy Myers. Thank you to the town board for your gracious support. During the course of the summer and the winter months, we have an awesome collaboration with the East Hampton Town Marine Museum, where I've expanded a program for curriculum development in the schools, where we visit the East Hampton Town Marine Museum, study maritime history, and then we walk to the U.S. Life Saving Station. Having the collaborative use of the two buildings has not only lifted up what our board is doing and connected us into the community, but it's made us a direct connection into the school system. We're now no longer enrichment, we're their curriculum.
Stacy, would you also just, because we had the recreation discussion earlier, could you just talk a little bit about the summer camp that's going to be offered at the Marine Museum as well and how to apply for that, et cetera?
Yes, absolutely. We do have a really popular summer program. I think this year it will be its 18th year in operation, began at the East Hampton Town Marine Museum, and we've expanded it now to operate out of the U.S. Life Saving Station as well. It's four weeks. We are unfortunately booked for the season. Our program booked this year in one week, so it was a complement to the program.
My daughter did it for a couple of summers. It was a great program.
Yeah, actually, I think she was one of the founding groups in the program when we started it originally.
She's going to be 25 next month, so.
Yeah, it originally operated when I worked with another organization, and so it's just continued to grow since that point. Thank you so much for asking.
So if you don't mind, I know the board members, the majority of the public know my involvement with the station, and even this weekend, when we were commissioning the BB surf, reckless surf boat, which I look forward to rowing one day, and to, and thank you to all the plank owners for that. There's not much in East Hampton that I love more than my, more than my hometown, my family, as I said, Penn State football, and also the members of this committee and the building of the Amagansett Life Saving Station. It is truly a treasure to East Hampton that, growing up here, I didn't know anything about until about 2007. So to anyone listening, watching, please contact this wonderful trustee committee. Call it down, it's 160 Atlantic Avenue. The website is amagansettlss.org, then too, and see our spectacular, wonderful maritime history. It's collaborative with all the other museums that are out here then too. There's so much great history that we have that we want to show off in the town of East Hampton. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, I would just also say thank you to everybody. I was able to attend that ceremony. I didn't know exactly what to expect, but it was, it was a beautiful ceremony, beautiful building, beautiful boat. Dave, you gave a great speech and had a very professional jacket on. And blue, so matched your Penn State. And then I also want to say thanks to Stacy Myers. You, you offered to, to show me the Marine Museum. You had another group in there that day, and I'm embarrassed to say I had never been, but it was, it was super enlightening and I, and I appreciate it. And I'm very happy to hear that you guys are pursuing, what you have is wonderful, but you're pursuing, you know, still doing more things and building on that history. So I hope to support you as you go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that wraps up our topics for today, so we are now up to the portion where we do our liaison reports. So Tom, you're up first.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Amagansett Citizens Advisory Committee, the next meeting will be July 14. We have Assemblyman Tommy John Shavoni, who will be there to update the committee from Albany as well. IT, Jason, if we could possibly bring up the IT graphic. So just wanted to give an update of what we've got going on in IT for OpenGov. So as of March 17, we've had 2,053 records we've processed through the new system, which includes 1,044, 1,144 permits issued and collected, and over 1 million of revenue has come in through the OpenGov system. So it's operating well. One piece of feedback we have had, just questions regarding applications within OpenGov, you know, who to ask those questions to? Some people have been reaching out directly to the IT department. The actual thing is if you, if you have a question regarding building, call the building department. If you have a question regarding planning, contact the planning department. They are the overarching architects of each of their OpenGov applications. So if there's something that you want us to consider for a change, that's the right avenue to kind of pursue, or you can reach out to my office as well. Human Services, we've got a bit going on here. I did have a meeting last week with the Human Services Director, just to kind of go over the history of adult care and the youth program, and we're looking to have a work session just to discuss those two aspects, both the history and what the cost was to the town in the past, and you know, why it was discontinued, when it was discontinued, and what it did and did not offer, just to kind of get everybody updated on that. Similarly with the youth program, I've been working with some East Hampton High School students, just to discuss what they want there. Oh, sorry, that's a different piece. It's actually youth government. We've been taking with high school students, discuss what they might want to do there. Then we also did our 2025 survey of the Congregate Meal Program recently. We've got a graphic here, LTV, we could pull that one up. We distributed 150 surveys, of which 88 were returned, and you know, just to kind of give a concept of what actually goes on through that department. 52 of the 88 took place in the congregate meals, 36 took place in the grab and go. The overwhelming majority, well over 50%, said that they loved the taste of the food. The top three foods, any ideas what the top three foods were in the senior center?
Sure. Dessert or?
Actually, main course, no.
Really?
Yeah. Main course was, the top three were taco salad, spaghetti with meatballs, and?
Chicken corambeau.
Chicken was number three. There you go, look at that. Any ideas of the ones we did not like?
I was going to say lasagna. No, as they liked.
The bottom three were ham, fish, and the veggie burger. You know, just generally speaking, we had very strong feedback on the quality of the food that comes out there, and it just speaks testament to, you know, the kitchen staff and they do a fantastic job in putting those meals out.
Rudy DeSanti is running the kitchen, and he's got a really great staff that works with him.
Yes.
For those that don't know, Rudy DeSanti is Greason's Donuts.
Donuts. Don't forget the egg sandwiches, man.
Egg sandwiches.
We had our stop day at the Springs Fireplace Recycling Center, very successfully done last Saturday. We have special events, just one thing that has come up on commercial applications, I just want to kind of make applicants aware of this on commercial properties, you know, for, for the town Special Events Committee to initiate a permit, it is critical that you have a CO. You know, in order for us to actually allow you to have an event there, we need to know that the structure is safe. So you know, if you have questions on that, you can reach out to Special Events Committee or the town attorney's office, but it is something we're seeing and, you know, want to take into account.
Tom, could we bring back maybe for a topic on the first, I believe it is, the special event, the fees, I know some of the late fees, when you, when you, when we started calculating them were pre-exorbitant.
Yeah, no, we've seen some high ones, and you know, look, this is something that it's, it's been a challenge because as those late applications come in, it really does impact the workflow of our special events team and committee. So we put some fairly steep, you know, fees in there. Delayed applications are still coming in, and you know, I think some people do have some sticker shock with what they've seen with regards to those numbers. We, as a town board, you know, we, we're going to bring some back to the town board to look to reducing them in certain cases. You know, the question is, is that do we reduce all or do we reduce some? So I think for me, a case type basis might be the best approach, but again, we can bring it back on the first and discuss.
That'd be great.
We had last week the Artists in Paradise event for the Arts Council Committee, LTV. That is available to re-watch in LTV, very successful turnout and very good feedback from the community of what they want to see. Some changes we're immediately going to implement on the town's Art Council webpage. We will be putting up a calendar of events that are going on in the arts community out there, and we're also looking to collate a kind of a stronger list of all the artists in the community, just so we have that outreach to them. If people want to reach out to my office with emails or best contact details, we will ensure that you're updated of any events going forward. Then we also have the Wildlife Management Advisory Committee. There is a walkthrough of the Grassy Hollow Preserve Northwest Road this Friday at 9:00 a.m. Again, this is an area of the town's reserves that have been deer-proofed, they've been fenced off, so the purpose for the committee there is to review, you know, what does the biodiversity and the health of the ecosystem look like when the deer are absent from that area? So I will bring that feedback to the next liaison report. There is a business committee meeting June 18 at 2:00 p.m. On the agenda is discussing the, the building department, and additionally, following last night's very successful emergency management meeting, which thank you very much, Madam Supervisor, for organizing that. You know, how best to outreach to the hotels to ensure that, you know, they're getting their information to their residents, and you know, if there is an emergency evacuation order issued, you know, how, how best to have them comply with that, what their needs are and what our public safety needs are? So I want to begin that conversation. And yes, and just lastly, from the emergency preparedness piece, I'm sure you're going to talk about that, but a very successful meeting available on LTV for those who watch who couldn't make it, and something we all need to kind of have on the forefront of our radar.
Thank you, Tom. Tom, I would love to attend the Business Committee meeting, if I may, as liaison to the building.
Absolutely.
That would be great. Okay, David?
Yes, thank you so very much. As Superintendent Recreation, John Rooney, just mentioned, the beaches are all currently open and lifeguarded right now, which also means that East Hampton Town PD is actively enforcing parking restrictions and permitting at our town beaches and our town parking lots. Please be aware of where you're parking in the right of ways for time restrictions and also the parking and permitting needs. Update on the Nature Preserve Committee met last week, we had discussions on Town Line, excuse me, Town Lane Park, which is actually a pretty fabulous pocket park with very large sculptures in it. That was purchased from a family called the Sofa family, that was actually would like to actually donate time, services, and finances to actually, not necessarily restore the park, but also make it more accessible to others, ADA accessible to others. It's actually a quite neat park on Town Lane that not many individuals go to, and next door to it, there's actually a farm where there's actually cows and steer on it right now, of all things, which is great to see in livestock in East Hampton. Also with that, the Nature Preserve Committee was discussing bamboo removal, of all things, timely discussion, and we are also discussing e-bikes then too, and specifically e-bikes on some of the trails in East Hampton then too. So we're going to be discussing that a little bit further, how sometimes e-bikes that have certain torque actually damage the trail systems on there also. That one's been, been brewing for a little bit. Want to let everyone know that the Montauk Playhouse, the pools are completely full now of water. They're being, the systems are being tested and balanced right now, and we are closing in on completion of that project then too, which is great, and that's a milestone moment to see, to see that then too. So there'll be more information upcoming about the update to the pool upcoming, but the sea water in the pool is pretty wonderful, I do have to say, on both of them. Town's aquaculture, aquaculture department under John Dunn is working hard. Their community aquaculture program is highly successful. Please keep contacting Barley if you have any questions on your, your oysters there, and they're going to be getting ready to seed some more oysters shortly then too. Maybe we'll even bring Barley in for work session discussion in the summer upcoming then too. As I mentioned just a little bit earlier, to members of the Sustainability Committee then too, that were talking about the critical root zone protection, I had a meeting with Superintendent of Highways, Steve Lynch, last week, in which we want to bring up to the town board work session discussion about the town's initiatives for reclamation or protection of the town's right of ways then too. There's certain aspects that we see in the town code, or just to outreach to property owners, that they can't impede the town's right of ways then too, because the town right of ways are there not just for beauty, but they're also there for safety then too. So that's something that we're working on, maybe we can get to the town board sometime, maybe in late, late July, if it's okay, Madam Supervisor. We'll let you know there. Want to let everyone know that I've been working with legislator Welker and legislator Stark and Commissioner Sarah Lansdale of Lansdale, and a working committee about working waterfront, fisheries working waterfront, which is something that the town board and myself have been advocating at the county level. I believe this coming Tuesday, they'll be laying on the table a new legislation defining working waterfront within the county then too, which will lead up to potential funding for working waterfront easements then too. This is a long time coming to protect that industry on there. There'll be multiple public hearings upcoming on that. We hope if we move forward, but letting the board know that that's moving ahead, and that when I get more information, I will send it to the town board, and the support of the town and the supervisor will be requested if we want to assist with this moving forward. But again, it is being moved forward by legislator Welker and legislator Stark, and I want to thank their, for their, all their efforts on this and that working committee. efforts on this and that working committee. A couple of things, I don't have the, so, on Friday, I took one of my daughters, we went up to the Little League Field. They had the championship games there for the minor leagues and major leagues. There had to be 350 people there watching these games. I will bring that back in July, the names of those committee, sorry, of those winning teams up there. But you're right, Madam Supervisor, we have to address more parking there too, knowing that there's some construction going on there. So, we'll work with that. Congratulations to the boys and girls and to the Little League umpires, coaches all. It was a great season. Lastly, I know I sat here and Tom and I had graduating, actually, and Carol, you had your granddaughters also. We had graduating seniors. I want to congrats, give congratulations to all the graduates, not just from East Hampton High School, from Eleanor Whitmore, Free K, from eighth graders to college. Growing up in East Hampton, what you learn a lot about is how special of a place, you know, from the environmental sensitivities to working hard, to some of our history here then too. I think all along the way, what that does is makes individuals a stronger people in that they can go out in the world and lead the world as we need to. So, I want to thank all the educators along the way. And I want to thank all the students of East Hampton that have graduated from all their levels right now, because it is a milestone moment in all of our lives then too to graduate anything. And I wish everyone the greatest success and to all the parents and family members also for supporting their graduates. I hope I have more graduates upcoming then too. But it's a milestone weeks here right now for individuals, and let's salute our graduates. And that's all I want to say. Thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thanks, David. Kate?
Yes, I have a brief liaison report. The Coastal Resiliency Grant from Montauk as a model is, the RFP is closed. We have a number of submissions and the reviewing committee is getting going on that. On the dune, we're also making progress moving forward on that as well with completing the necessary postings for the DEC. There is a comment period on the DEC website. Anybody that'd like to make a comment, it's still open until this Friday. And I also met with Len Green of the Sustainability Committee and many other things to talk about forming a group of kind of community organizations and town partnership on creating resource and information for folks on how they can recreate, recreate what we have here and other sustainable landscaping practices. And I look forward to that meeting. Also, I want to let everyone know that the compost and bin rain barrel sale will be taking place on Saturday, July 26th, at Town Hall between 2:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. You can, the Earth Machine, which is how you can hold up to 50% of all household waste, can be composted right in your backyard with this. It's a 50% off retail offer, and it ends soon. I feel like I'm doing a commercial. And that's $65. Also, something I'm interested in is a rain barrel sale. So, assistant rain barrels being also offered. It's a 55-gallon capacity. It conserves water, something we all need to do, and it cuts household water bills if you have town water up to 40%. That is also, will be on sale for $65. You need to order yours on the website, which is easthampton.compostersale.com. You need to order it. I don't believe sales will be taking place here on town property. There's, there will be no ability to do point-to-point sales there. And please go to easthamptoncompostersale.com for more information. And I hope everyone spreads this out to their CACs and all other groups. Take avail of the discounts and compost at home and help our community be more sustainable and lower your costs of living as well. The last thing I want to do is, a bit on a personal note, I want to thank everyone that turned down on Saturday for the rally at Town Hall, the No Kings Rally. I want to also thank the organizers for the work that they did on getting out the word and for the respectful behavior of the participants. And I also would greatly thank East Hampton Town Police Department for the fine work that they did keeping everybody safe. It was an awesome event, and I thank everyone for showing up. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Kate. Ian?
Yes, the Ag Advisory Committee met last Thursday, and I was happy to see a couple of members of the public show up. We are at a new location at Suite 111A at 300 Panico Place, near the Planning Department, Building Department. And that'll be a regular meeting place. Everything is posted on the web now so that people can find us, along with agendas. The main conversation, as I touched on my last liaison report, was about some code changes and site plan application changes that the Ag Committee has been talking about for a number of years. Chris Stecker and Tina Lagren from the Planning Department were both there, and there was a very productive conversation, I thought, with what the Ag Community is asking for, and then a planning assessment about other things that are, you know, non-agricultural considerations. And I thought it was a productive conversation. I think the next step, if there's support on the board, would be to have a presentation before us. Before we dig too much into which codes will be changed, I want to make sure that in principle, we kind of are all in agreement. I think some of the asks are, you know, a little bit easier and some are more difficult. And I think it'd be helpful to sort of have, give some feedback before we put a lot of work in, and hopefully in the coming months. I think the Ag Committee would like to meet one more time after getting that feedback to sort of, you know, refine their asks, so to speak. And then I anticipate a presentation with the Ag Committee as well as the Planning Department so that you guys can sort of hear some.
Do you think like August, September?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, with the caveat being that the Agricultural Committee gets very, very busy, and traditionally, they've paused their meetings in the summer. So, I don't know, but soon. And I think it's ripe or very nearly ripe for a board discussion where we can give them further direction on the next steps, or not. You know, if we say that we're not in favor of these things, then at least that they would know. The Spring CAC will meet tonight at Ashwag Hall at 6:00 p.m. It's a fairly open agenda tonight to revisit some old items. And then, another thing that I mentioned in my last rate liaison report is parking in that area. I was outreach by a number of people who use either Ashwag Hall or the surrounding area and with concerns about parking safety when there's events in the area. I would really like to dive in. There's not a lot of great solutions in terms of where to put parking while still maintaining the sort of charm and beauty of the area. There's historically been conversation, I think Kathy, you mentioned this, behind the library, there's a wooded area, but it's not a real high-quality woods and there's sort of a clearing. And I think that that is the area that would make the most sense for parking. And if there's support, generally here, I would like to start to involve planning and natural resources to make sure that it's possible.
So, I think there was a Drew Bennett report
Okay.
for the library from a couple of years ago. And part of his scope was to look at additional parking. So, you may want to start there.
I will. Yeah, like I said, if there's general support, then I'll pursue this. And I don't know, I mean, we're not too far from Pussy's Pond there. It's on Springs Fireplace. So, it's not a, you know, slam dunk easy solution, but I think it's the best one. And I think that, you know, a lot of great things have happened in that area with the Parsons Blacksmith Shop has been cleaned out. It's open. The library is celebrating their 50th, or the Springs Historical Society is celebrating its 50th year. A lot of things going on at the library. Ashwag Hall has all sorts of events. It's a really, you know, special, beautiful area. We want people to come and enjoy it, but we want everyone to be able to be safe, and parking is.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I see some special events. Parking is challenging. I mean, look, you guys are all Springs residents. You know this area better than me. But from what I see externally, it's very much the heart and the soul of that hamlet. And, you know, parking continues to be an issue. So, anything we can do to explore addressing that, I think will be very helpful to the community.
And it is the heart of Springs. I mean, that's what we call it. And I know they've got a couple of events for the heart of Springs coming up. And as our community, our year-round community is growing, so it
Yeah. I don't know who attended Springs Fest, oh, sorry.
Address that.
Yeah. And Springs Fest last, I mean, there's just some really, really special events, and it's a beautiful place. So, again, the goal would be to create parking, make it safer, and try to do that in balance with maintaining its beauty, which is a difficult task. But I want to sort of roll our, my sleeves up here and dig in to see what we can do. And again, that will involve, I think, planning, perhaps outside engineer. I'll start with Drew Bennett and natural resources to make sure that we're doing everything properly. And we'll discuss that plan with the CAC in more depth tonight. It's come up in the past, but I think that's going to be a major topic of conversation. The Property Management Committee will meet tomorrow at 4:30 in this room. The agenda is to talk, and I mentioned this in my last liaison report as well, to talk about the next step in the Parsons Dodge Homestead. We adopted the management plan. It's a unique property and the end user, it's kind of wide open from an agricultural operator to somebody else. There were a number of reasons we purchased that property, and there's three very unique structures there. And so, the question is, do we restore the structures and then find a licensee? Or do we go out to RFP or find a licensee to determine how those structures will be restored? The barn, for example, is an old dairy barn. It's not very useful right now in its current state and certainly needs repair. But before, you know, it is repaired or restored, it would be nice to know how it's going to be used. And so, I'm going to look for guidance from that committee in terms of the order of operations here. And of course, talk to the board as well about it. But I would like to, the end goal being, I would like to get a licensee into the Dodge property, get everything restored and start to see that property used, because it also is part of the heart of Springs. And I think a great acquisition that I just want to bring to its full fruition. We're also in the earlier stages of the Osborne Farm Management Plan, and that'll be on the agenda. It's exciting to talk about that because it's such a beautiful property and talking about the opportunities of visiting it with the pond there, the ocean, and just the overall vista, and along with three special structures. Looking forward to moving that management plan along. And I think that, I think that this is going to be a place that, you know, a lot of townspeople not only appreciate from, you know, afar, but are going to be able to visit and engage with even more intimately. As part of that, I would also like to, Scott Wilson from Land Management has reached out to Drew Bennett to get an estimate for engineering on the structures there, for a conditions assessment, as well as potential for plans and specs for bidding. I would like to proceed with this because, you know, of course, if we have historic buildings, we want to maintain them. But also, I want to make sure that in the short term, that they're watertight and there's nothing, they're not deteriorating further. So, even before we have an end user there, I think there might be a good idea. The roof, for example, on the Osborne House, I think would be worth looking into in the short term. We'll talk about that with the committee as well. Again, that wouldn't involve any sort of use changes or any, the management plan would be separate. But regardless of the end use, we want to make sure that those structures are maintained and restored. And so, I think I want to start that sooner than later.
And that's been similar practice to our other CBF properties, get the structural assessment report, find out what the phased approach might be. But if there's intrusion that can deteriorate historical structure, I would agree. Something has to be taken care of that.
Well, that's great. I appreciate the support. And like I said, Scott Wilson has talked to Drew Bennett, who is preparing an estimate, and I'll bring that to resolution with board support. And I'm sure the Property Management Committee is going to be supportive as well, but we'll discuss that tomorrow. And lastly, CHAB, the Community Housing Advisory Board meets next Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. in the Planning Department Conference Room at 300 Panico Place. The agenda is not released yet, but looking forward to that committee as always, because as we all know, housing is such an important issue here. And that committee works very, very hard on finding solutions and new ideas of how we can address that issue.
Great. Thank you, Ian. So, I'd like to start my liaison report with the weekend activity from the East Hampton Town Police Department. There were a total of 202 events. There were five arrests. Three were DEWIs. There were 16 total noise residential complaints, but no violations were issued. There was one commercial noise complaint and a violation was issued. There were six violations for town ordinances, 43 for uniform traffic tickets, eight accidents, and seven aided cases. There was, as Kate mentioned, the King's, No Kings protest here on Saturday at Town Hall. Approximately 1,200 residents participated. It was a peaceful demonstration. The biggest issue was parking, and the East Hampton Town Police Department is debriefing to figure out, there were some issues of folks parking on Panico Place, and it could impede ambulances. So, we had to get that rectified quickly. So, because as I understand it, there may be another demonstration in July. There was another notable case, and that was criminal mischief at Maidstone Park Baseball Field. The suspect was responsible for doing donuts on the field, tearing up the grass and running over the chain-link fence. But he was apprehended at the scene. And as Kate mentioned, we're really grateful to our East Hampton Town Police Department. They have been really taxed these last few weeks, and they handle everything with such compassion and professionalism.
Can I just go with that one?
Sure, yeah.
The one at Maidstone. So, that's the second time that I've been on the board that people have thrown donuts up there on the field. The first time was a little bit more gut punching, because it was right before the season. This is post the season. And we did put up split rail fence in the outfield, because that's where the perpetrator, perpetrator, excuse me, individual came on the property at that time. So, I don't know. Is this something where we put more split rail fence around? Is that something we have to look at for
Yeah.
visual? Is that, you know, is this a safety thing?
Can we put cameras out there?
We could put cameras everywhere, but it's not, that's going to stop someone from just going on the field.
Yeah, no, no. But I mean, we were fortunate this time. They were caught in the act in the middle of the night.
Correct. There are cameras out there. There are cameras down by the beach, but not up there. So, anyway, I guess just as board members drive around there, think what's appropriate, maybe take the CAC. It's just, you know, it was in the middle of the season.
Did you see the pictures? Did you get, you got pictures, right?
Yeah, you know, that's just my comments on it.
Yeah. And I believe Steve O'Brien was called down in the middle of the night, and it was about $2,000 he anticipated in damage.
It's probably, it might be even a little bit more. It's a lot of damage.
Yeah, they really tore it up. As Tom mentioned last night, we had the Emergency Preparedness Night here. It was hosted by the town and the Suffolk County Fire Rescue and Emergency Services, known as FRES. The event focused on the growing risks our region faces, including hurricanes, wildfires, and flooding, and how we, as residents, can take practical steps to prepare. Patrick actually put the link to the YouTube video. We're grateful LTV actually put it out live last night. They'll be building it into their rotation. There's a QR code now on the website so folks can watch it. And we've also pushed that out on social media. I have a last-minute resolution that's on the agenda, and this was a letter that Scott Wilson received earlier this month from the DEC. They're looking to do their yearly banding of Long Island Canada geese. They want to do that sometime between mid-June through mid-July, and they want to do it at Wayne's Cut Pond. They only need one day, three to four hours. And they'll be, I can just read what this says. During this window, Canada geese molt their flight feathers, leaving them unable to fly. We will capture the geese by corralling them into a pen made from nets. We will do this on foot, slowly approaching the birds. Once captured, we will gather biological information, attach a U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service band on one leg, and release them. We'll be at the site for only one day for approximately three to four hours. Property personnel will be given sufficient notice before banding activities, and the DEC staff are willing to band early in the morning to disrupt, to avoid disrupting daily activities as necessary. I think it's something that
Learning something every day there.
You know, that maybe we could support. The only thing that the Town Attorney's Office asked for was that the DEC provide a hold harmless agreement. So, there's a resolution on for that today.
It also shows that that purchase of that property is now allowed for the first ever public access. Well, not the first ever, but public access the pond again.
Yeah. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that this Thursday is Juneteenth. Here in East Hampton, we'll be marking the occasion with two special community events. The first is at Herrick Park from noon to 4:00. That's going to be a celebration with music, food, and reflections from local clergy and leaders. And then later that evening, the Eastville Community Historical Society and LTV Studios is hosting their second annual Juneteenth Jubilee, beginning at 6:00 p.m. That'll feature music awards and community connection. The town is actually preparing a number of certificates of recognition for those organizations that are going to be honored. We hope you'll join us at one or both of those events. And I should also note that town offices will be closed, but our recycling centers will be open during normal business hours. And that's what I have for my report. So, now we can, since we don't have a meeting on Thursday, our resolutions are a little bit more robust today. So, Tom, if you could please set us, start us off.
Certainly. 2025-884, this is approval of warrant claims in the amount of $2,642,559.19. 2025-884, this is approval of warrant claims in the amount of $2,642,559.19, and in the amount of $29,105.53.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
885 is to authorize payment of a prior-year invoice for the Fire Marshal's Office in the amount of $38.25.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
886 is for the Wellness 60+ Montauk Community Center Senior Center Meditation Program, offered by Lydia Burns. This is a total cost to the town not to exceed $900.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
887 is a Wellness 60+ Chair Yoga for the town. This is offered by Lawrence Nesbit, and this is to not to exceed $3,125.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I'm happy to be able to offer Resolution 2025-888. This is a scheduled public hearing for amendments to Chapter 182 of the Town of East Hampton's National Reserve Code. This public hearing will be held on July 17, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. 889 is appoint seasonal lifeguards in the Recreation Department for June 2025, effective June 14, 2025, names, positions, and pay grades below.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
890 is appoint seasonal employee in the Recreation Department, Juan Isisa, hourly rate of $17.85, effective June 20, 2025.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
891 is determine seasonal lifeguards in the Recreation Department, June 20, for June 2025, effective May 18, 2025, names and positions below.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
892 is a resolution authorized an easement and indemnification agreement between the Town of East Hampton and the property owner at 76 Floyd Street.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
893 is authorize a title search for Liberty Property Incorporated for town-owned property at Suffolk County Tax Net 300-149-13, for not to exceed $475.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
894 is a separate donation of a memorial bench, a gift from Joseph Lombardo, whereas Joseph Lombardo would like to donate a memorial bench as a gift to the Town of East Hampton for the Battle Within Foundation and the Suffolk County Masonic District to be placed in the Buckskill Medal Preserve, whereas the placement of the donated bench will be coordinated with the Department of Land Management. Now, therefore, be it the resolve of the Town Board hereby gratefully accepts the donation by Joseph Lombardo to the Town of East Hampton.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
895 is amend the Resolution 2025-806 for Franklin Bronze Plaque, where the proposal of the invoice is now in the amount of $3,123.50.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
896, accept bid EH25-025. This is for the mule, utility vehicle for lifeguards from Maximum Motorsports, in the amount $18,495.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 897. This is a provisional appointment to full-time environmental analyst in the Planning Department for Jake Kushner. Be resolved that Jake Kushner is hereby appointed on a provisional basis to the full-time position of environmental analyst in the Planning Department at the hourly rate of $35.25, with an annual salary of $73,330.19, and this is effective June 30, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 898 is to amend the 2025 CSEA Schedule A to add Planner 2. Resolve that the CSEA Schedule A is hereby amended to reflect the addition of Planner 2 on grade 26, which is starting step, starting step in, what is that? Starting step in 2025 is $32.64 per hour with a scheduled 40-hour work week, and this is effective June 18, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 899 is to accept scenic easement for Urban Renewal Parcel 61 in East Hampton 2A. The grantor is Dina L. Zwanger as trustee of the Irrevocable Trust. The location is 2 Mulford Avenue, East Hampton, and the reviewing agency is the Town Board, updating the Urban Renewal File Map Study.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 900 is the approval of very special events for June and July 2025. The first is Amber Way's fundraiser, Summer Solstice Fett. This is at Amber Way Farms, 2367 Main Street, Amagansett. It will take place on Saturday, June 21, 4:00 p.m., 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. They have a rain date for the next day, the Sunday, the 22nd, 4:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Next is Montauk Historical Society, How Dry We Weren, opening party. This takes place at Carl Fisher House, 44 Foxborough Road in Montauk, Friday, June 27, 2025, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The next is Wedding at Longhouse Reserve. This takes place on Saturday, June 28, 4:45 p.m. And the next is Jess Frost at Duck Creek Music Series, Inez Velasco Orchestra. This takes place at 7:03, 2025, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The rain date is for July 27, 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 901 is the approval of MBX Sports LLC's seasonal special event permit for 2025. The operation takes place on June 23 to August 29, and this is at Beach Lane Beach.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 902 is the approving, approval of Loving Adventures LLC's special events permit. This takes place at, this is for group surf lessons as well, at Atlantic Drive Beach in Amagansett, from June 30 to September 4, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Next is Resolution 903, and this is to amend Resolution 798 for the special events, Duck Creek Music Series. This is to add Little Black Egg and $75, and this event will take place on June 21, 6 to 8 p.m.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 904 is to release security for road work, security for Urban Renewal Parcel 20A in East Hampton-10. This is, the applicant was Blue Jay Way LLC, and the security being remitted is $23,000.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
905 is to authorize payment to Galls LLC, and the warehouse clause is somehow in the title. It has been ascertained that the ordinance department records that invoice in 2003 was never paid to Galls. Be resolved that this payment will be made.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
So now we're on to additional resolutions after deadline. David, we're back to you.
I apologize. I have Resolution 906 is a budget modification for the Joint Fuel Facility, where we're bringing $466 for maintenance contracts off for, to the same amount to subcontractor cost.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 907, and this is to adopt local law amending Chapter 255, Article 11, to extend the pilot program for outdoor dining. A public hearing was held on June 5 to consider local law, the same local law, to extend the program that we have in existence for transferring indoor restaurants, dining seating to outdoor dining seating for three more additional years to December 31, 2027.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 2025-908, and that's to appoint temporary office assistant in the town attorney's office. David Alvarez is hereby appointed to the position of temporary office assistant in the town attorney's office at the hourly rate of $25.05, and this is for a 90-day period beginning June 18, ending on September 16. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
909 is to amend the CSCA Schedule A. This is the regrade for Harbor Master 2. The CSCA Schedule A is hereby amended to reflect the regrade in the Harbor Master 2 title to grade 32 from grade 33, to establish continuity in the progression of the Harbor Master titles, effective June 18. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
910 is to approve paid leave for an employee in the East Hampton Town Police Department. An employee who was unable to return to work and has used all accumulated sick leave is entitled to one-half day, one-half pay for a period of up to six months. So this will begin May 9, 2025. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
911 is the police department employee fingerprint reimbursement. This is for Jessica Claflin. She'll be reimbursed $89.25. And may I add that she is the fourth generation of Claflins to work for the East Hampton Town Police Department. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
912 is a uniform reimbursement for Sergeant Royal, not to exceed $500. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
913 is to increase the cap for Dan Rosso and Whiteman, Osterman, and Hannah LLP as outside environmental council secret 2025, constituting a total of $100,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
914 is to pay the NYMER deductible to Gary Jackson in the amount of $216.29. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-915 is a refund for the CPA tax for a first-time homebuyer to Vinta Miller, and the Town Bookkeeping Department is hereby authorized to issue a payment in the amount of $28,125. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
916 is to authorize reimbursement for food for the Three Mile Harbor fireworks for